Good evening. I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting Wednesday, May 14th, 2025 to order tonight. And we'll start with approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mayor Henley, seconded by Councillor Jones. All in favor, put your hands.
Alright.
And contrary minded, seeing none, I declare this motion here. We'll go right into, we have a presentation tonight. Our first presentation is YMCA Canada. The presenter is Anis Alawer, Yreach Settlement Staff. He is originally from Syria, has been in Canada for almost three years. Studied English and English Language and Literature at Damascus University, located in Damascus, Syria, and graduated in 2019. Following university, Anis started working with Syrian Arab Red Crescent and UNHCR as an outreach volunteer and was promoted to be a team leader. At this job, he accomplished many community initiatives to help people affected during the conflict in Syria. He was working at Pizza La Morin Oxford, and now he is the Yreach Settlement Staff with YMCA Canada. Thank you for being here tonight, Anis, and I now turn the meeting over to you for your presentation.
Perfect. You can have a seat if you like, or yes, the camera will go to you.
Hi, everyone. As introduced, my name is Anis Alawer. I'm originally from Syria. I came here to Canada almost three years. And I started working with YMCA Canada almost one year, one year ago. Yes, I start with that. And we are working with the community here. We have many collaboration with all the community and helping newcomers to get all the services here. So, for example, if we have any a newcomer family, we can help them to get like health cards, MSI cards, or a social insurance number, or navigate them like to know the bank, how to start like banking information or bank account. And like if we ask you, if I ask you, who's the newcomers? Is there anyone know who's the newcomers here in the community?
See some of them.
Sorry?
We see some of them that come in.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but sometimes they can refer to the newcomers as also for people who are coming from Canada also, like let's say from Ontario to here to Nova Scotia. So we mention them as a newcomers also. So it may contain like some people like people who are coming from abroad as immigrant or refugees or individuals or families. So our main job here with YMCA is going to focus on the intake forms with the families. We usually like send them with all the community members if they want any service like here in the community. We can give them like an overview of the community and if they need any help like on the health, we usually refer them to Nova Scotia Health or any like community services. And we usually like help all the people here in the community in collaboration with them. So we usually like refer people to ICANS or Nova Scotia Health or Service Canada or any other community partners. And one of the examples I want to mention like about the Festival of Teige, which is an event, we did it last year in collaboration with Town of Oxford and like the church here, it's the Trinity Church in Oxford. And we helped like a group of people because they want like to have their festival to express their opinion and their music here in Canada, which is very good, I see, because we got about 15 people attend and people from the community and the newcomers from here from Oxford. And we usually like play a main role for the multicultural groups. We did like one here in Oxford and the other one in Pugwash. So we got like lots of students from Oxford or Pugwash to get in this multicultural group. And now we have like a main thing we are doing here in Oxford. It called like the Spring Events in collaboration with Marion. So we did like something related to soccer in the arena every Friday from 2:45 until 5:00. And we have like lots of events we are doing here in Oxford and in Pugwash. And we are all over the province, so we cover all the provinces outside HRM. So if there is any question, please let me know.
Got a quick question.
Yeah.
Just off the top of your head, how many newcomers have come to Oxford in the last, say, year and a half, including those from Western Canada?
Yeah.
You know, in total, do you have any idea?
Almost for Oxford and Pugwash, I have 180 persons.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
A lot.
So we have a lot and usually most of the people are coming here to the plan. So we did like the settlement plan, a plan for them, so we can help them to navigate to the community. So, yes.
It's a wonderful service.
Yeah, we wish like doing good with the community because like as our Yreach, sometimes we got like some, some things like we can't do, like the grants. Sometimes we don't have much, much money like to do for the, our people, so that we we usually like refer them to any other organizations that can help them, for example, like ICANS. Because sometimes if we refer people to ICANS, if they want like a courses like to improve their English. So sometimes ICANS helps them with that. So, yes.
Do you have anything coming up?
Yes, yes. We have like a collaboration now for the multicultural consent. It will happen like in Ambers next month. It's like a competition of poets or writing. So we are doing something like this. And we have like the soccer here in the field. It will happen on Tuesday and Thursday every week. We did it last year and this year we will do it. And we have a multicultural day. It will happen in June 27. And we have like some events in collaboration with the community and the newcomers here in Oxford and Pugwash.
Send us on.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, thank you very much for your time tonight. We learned a lot.
I wish, thank you.
We're working with you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So our second presenter is not online yet, so we can move to number four in the agenda and then come back, if that works for everybody.
You can stay if you want.
Yeah.
Listen.
Okay.
Take off whatever you want. Alright, so let's skip to number four, approval of the minutes, April 9th, 2025. Everyone's had a chance to see them. Any errors or omissions? Well, very good. I've minutes approved. We'll move on to town department reports. Do we have her yet?
Was that not her, but Nick's popping on for your 5.1?
We have Public Works Department presented by Nick Brady, Public Works Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can hear me okay?
Okay.
Yep. The Public Works Team completed some of the tasks in April 2 and T25. Now, remove the seating of the theatre for accessibility. Quarterly water meter reads. We cleared storm drains around town, removed the ice at the arena, salted streets and walkways as needed. Monthly equipment greasing, monthly generator checks at the wells and the lift station. We repaired a water leak on the old tank road. Multiple customer service request forms completed. House closing, water meter reads. We installed benches and garbage cans around town. Started our annual spring cleanup. And we also repaired a broken fan cover in a doorknob at the library. Thank you.
Any questions? Alright, thank you.
And our presenter, I think she's popping. Oh, she's, um, you didn't do. So Haley, are you with us there?
Yeah, hi.
Perfect, perfect. Alright, we're gonna let Carla introduce you here. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
This is Give Me A Reason To Stay, Understanding Youth Outmigration in Rural Nova Scotia. Our presenter is Haley Tatry tonight, PhD candidate sociologist. Haley uses she/her pronouns. She is a sociologist, a first gen university student, a part-time instructor, and a PhD candidate in the Educational Studies Department at Mount St. Vincent University in Halifax, Nova Scotia. Haley grew up in Oxford and visits often to see her family. She is actively, actively involved in Justice for Workers, Nova Scotia. Haley lives in Halifax with her partner and two cats. Thank you for being here tonight, Haley. And now turn the meeting over to you for your presentation.
Hi there. So am I good to just share my screen for my presentation? Yeah, okay, just one moment. Okay. Okay, can folks see my screen? You should be able to see um, the presentation, okay. Okay, I'll get this out of the way. Alright, great. Okay, so hi, everybody. Thank you, Carla, for introducing me. So again, my name is Haley Tatry. I grew up in Oxford, graduated in 2014, I believe, yeah, from high school and haven't lived there since. But as Carla said, I do like to visit often to see my family who still live in the area. So I'm here today to talk about my research project, but before beginning, I would like to just acknowledge that the land that this research takes place on is the stolen and unceded land of the McMuff. I myself am a white settler who's been very blessed and fortunate to grow up on this land for my whole life. And I recognize that I am a treaty person, as we all are. And I would encourage all of you to take some time in the next few days to ask yourself, you know, let's, how do we move beyond a land acknowledgement and recognizing, you know, what does it mean for me to be a treaty person? What is my relationship to this land? Okay, so as mentioned, I grew up here for my whole life and still in Nova Scotia. I only briefly did not live in Nova Scotia, and that was when I did my undergrad in sociology and political science at Mount Allison. I have a Master of Arts in sociology from Dalhousie University, and I am nearing the completion of my Doctorate in Educational Studies. So I will soon be Dr. Tatry, but not that kind of doctor, although I've had a lot of people say, oh, we can't wait to have a family doctor in the area. And I'm like, no, 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 not that kind of doctor. Instead, I will be hopefully teaching at the university level. And I already teach right now at St. Mary's University, but I did just wrap up for the term. So I've been doing research on Cumberland County. And a lot of this is obviously not news to you folks, but when I do present on this research, this is how I like to greet folks with the big smiling photo of Oxley, the blueberry that we are of course so famous for. And I like to mention, you know, where is Cumberland County and what does it actually consist of? So Cumberland County, of course, as you know, it's Oxford, Amherst, the two villages, Pugwash and River Hibbert. And it's, it's pretty small. So according to the 2021 census, there was a little over 30,000 people. It's a big county, but not super populated. So this project is in collaboration with Mount St. Vincent University Researchers, so myself, Mytax, the municipality of the County of Cumberland, Town of Amherst, and the Town of Oxford in their mission to identify innovative solutions to engage youth in their communities and to better actually understand youth outmigration. So what is Mytax? Mytax is an organization that is empowering innovation through partnerships that help to address problems. So the issue we are looking at here is, okay, why are youth, you know, leaving the area? And if they did want to live here, why is that? How can we make this more attractive place for young people to live? So this research was funded by Mytax in part, but also by, you know, the Town of Oxford, Town of Amherst, and the municipality of Cumberland. And it's been going on now for a couple of years. And I do believe that there, some of you have been councillors for a while, some of you, I think, are relatively new. So some of you may have heard of this project, some may have not. But just know that, you know, Town of Oxford is a part of it, as is the Town of Amherst and the municipality of Cumberland. That funding went towards paying me. The, the funding has now ended, but it did go towards paying me, but also paying for things like travel, accommodations for if I needed to, you know, go to spaces to actually conduct interviews, to have gift cards for the participants, things like that, and also for travel cost if I wanted to go to conferences, for example, to present on this. So what was the research question? So I'm exploring how do schools influence youth outmigration from rural communities? And what role should local governments like yourselves take regarding schools, but also youth outmigration, okay? So I wanted to actually talk with people who live there. I wanted to understand, you know, what's it like to be a young person living in Cumberland? I wanted to hear what's known as their life narratives, right? And it was really important for me to let these individuals know, the participants know that, you know, your story matters, your voice matters, and I wanted them to be able to gain something from this experience, right? I wanted them to feel like their voice was actually going to contribute to something, which it absolutely is. Because not only is, you know, this research helping me to complete my doctorate, but also it is helping me to create a list of recommendations for the Town of Oxford, the Town of Amherst, and the County of Cumberland to actually implement and put in place. And hopefully we'll see some policy change come from that. So who are the participants? So so far, I, and I am mostly wrapped up now with my data collection. So I had one large sharing group that was hosted in Amherst, but it wasn't just Amherst youth. We made an effort to, and I worked in collaboration with the youth centre there. We worked hard to get youth from not just Amherst, but from all over. So we had youth from Parsborough, from Close to Advocate, Spring Hill. We might have had some from Oxford, really, really just all over. So we had a really nice spread. And they were all between the ages of, I believe, 12 and 18, which is exactly the, pretty close to the age I wanted, which was between 12 and 19. So that was our sharing circle. I got a lot of great information from that. I did try to do some one-on-one interviews. It was very hard to try to get youth to take part in these one-on-one interviews for a multitude of reasons, which I'll get into in a, in a couple more slides. But I also interviewed youth service providers, because they're the ones who are spending a lot of time with these kids, right? So folks who work for Schools Plus, who are perhaps school councillors or work for the Youth Development Centre. And I interviewed 18 youth service providers, which was really great. So those limitations, ethics approval was quite a big hump to get over. And accessing the schools is something I'm still really struggling with. I've been trying to complete. And I'm telling you all this just for transparency, because, you know, the way I look at this is, you know, you folks are part of funding this. Some, you know, different councillors from across the county were, you know, in meetings with me, developing the research question and helping me to come up with, okay, what's, what's this study gonna look like? So for full transparency, I have had issue accessing a lot of the schools. I'm currently trying to get in contact with Pugwash School for Ethics Approval, as their student council has expressed interest in having a sharing circle there. But I haven't heard back. I've been trying different avenues, but it's kind of like a fine line to balance between, you know, reaching out, wanting to make it happen, but not wanting to be seen as that weirdo who won't stop harassing the, the principal, right? So that's where I'm at with that. So hoping to get one more focus group done, but if not, it's not the end of the world. Youth engagement, again, that was another big issue. And I think, you know, that's a lot of different reasons. But I think a big reason is that frankly, youth just aren't used to their voices being heard. They're not used to someone actually caring about what they have to say, right? So that, that was another big hump to kind of overcome. And ethics approval through the schools took many, many months to actually hear back, which again, that was another obstacle. So what have I actually done so far? So I started data collection in the summer of 2024, which led into the fall as well. That's where I did most, if not all, my youth service provider interviews. And they were all face-to-face, which is something I was really excited about. I didn't just want it to be over Zoom. I wanted to, you know, try and create a bit of a more intimate space where they felt comfortable sharing things with me. And most of them did, right? There were some, we even asked, you know, can I say this off record? And I'd have to stop recording because they, you know, had some serious stuff to tell me. But there was a lot of, you know, great enriching data in those interviews. I also conducted some of the youth interviews, which was great. And again, I did this throughout Cumberland. The focus group was done a few months ago at the youth centre in Amherst, as I mentioned. The ethics application I did submit in June of 2024. I did not hear back from the schools until the end of November, which at that point, it was too late to get in before Christmas break. And I'm still kind of, again, in that process of trying to get into one more, like into the Pugwash School, but haven't heard back yet. So I've been focusing on analyzing the literature, looking at other studies that are similar to this one and transcribing interviews. So listening to the interviews that I, that were recorded on a secure recording device, typing it out and kind of like pulling out those key quotes, those key findings. So what are the findings so far? I could talk forever on this, which there will be an opportunity to hear me talk about it more at a later date. But for now, I just wanted to kind of just barely touch the surface on some of the findings so far. So transportation is a huge issue for, for young people here. And wasn't necessarily something I kind of foreseen being an issue. But again, that could just come back to the fact that I don't live there anymore. When I did live there, I was fortunate enough to have a car. But a lot of them had said, you know, A, if you're not 16, you can't, you're not even allowed to drive. And B, even if you are 16, you have to be, you know, lucky enough to have access to a car, to have your own car. But if you don't have those options, you're, you're kind of out of luck, right? You're very much stuck. And this was especially a big issue for youth who didn't live, you know, right in town, right? So perhaps, you know, way out in Collingwood or, you know, in, in between Parsborough and Advocate, they were saying, you know, I miss out on a lot because I just don't have a car and there's no transportation here in this area. So that was a really big, big concern for the youth. And I heard it from all the youth service providers too. Need for a third space was another big issue as well. So when we're talking about, you know, what is a third space? We have, the first space is your home, right? That's where you spend a lot of your time. Your second space would be your workplace slash school. But then, you know, we need a third space as humans, right? We like to have spaces to go to not be at work or school and to not be at home, but to actually be social, right? We're very social beings. So a lot of these youth had shared, and again, as to the service providers, they said, you know, we see this a lot with the kids. Them saying, well, we don't have anywhere to go, right? We can't go to bars because we're not old enough. And there's just not a lot of spaces for us to go and be social, right, and to just hang out other than school. So that was another interesting finding. Poverty and homelessness unfortunately was, was another big issue. Drugs as well, which I found again, kind of interesting. And I did only graduate about 10 years ago, but, and maybe drugs were a big issue back then, and I was just a goody-two-shoes, I don't know. But from talking to the youth and talking to the youth service providers, drugs is a huge issue now in the county, which is something that of course needs to be taken seriously. Why is this an issue? How can we address it? And lack of funding and training for the youth workers was another large finding, is that they were saying, you know, we're dealing with a lot of big, heavy stuff with, with these youth. And a lot of us, we, we don't have the money and we don't have the training to, to know how to address some of these big, big problems. So what are the contributions that this study will have? So the municipality is going to be recognized as a trailblazer. So us teaming up with Mytax and, and doing this really great study and then having policy recommendations is, you know, something that I think other municipalities can look up to, and not just in Nova Scotia, but across Canada. Because a lot of Canada is quite rural, right? And this issue of youth leaving and perhaps not coming back is of course something that a lot of rural communities are dealing with. To bring more research and funding to the area that could inform policy and program development, which I hope it does, which could help to retain youth in the area. The research as well has already, some of it has been presented at conferences, one in Toronto a year or so ago, going to Toronto again in a couple of weeks actually to present on this at a large conference that I was accepted to another in Quebec City. So being able to share, you know, hey, this is what Cumberland County is, and here's what the people there are saying, is a really great opportunity for, for the county to have some more exposure. The potential for more researchers and youth to actually stay in the county, more money in the local economy. And finally, again, just more research and programs happening in the county, which could lead to more job opportunities, especially through partnerships with NSCC and Mount Allison. I was already in contact with someone from Mount Allison, who is a professor who is very interested in this research and possible future collaborations. And with NSCC, there, there was some talk at the beginning of this project of, hey, maybe we could use some of these findings and look at what kind of programs should we offer in the future for youth to stay here, right? So there, I think, is a whole lot of potential with these findings as well. And finally, I wanted to talk about, you know, how am I gonna actually distribute these findings aside from, you know, giving you folks that, that report that I'm hoping to have done by the end of the summer. So I'm working on a book as well, so in, in the form of my dissertation, but I'm really hoping to get it published. And what's really great about this is that it's, it's not all academic jargon. I'm trying really hard to make this accessible too. And, and kind of like a fun read so that perhaps some of the youth and folks back home can read it and, and enjoy it, right? They're not gonna be falling asleep because it's some boring, you know, academic textbook. I've also been working with the Cumberland Archives to give a background on the county. So that's been really fun for me to dive into the history of this county and, and what does it mean to live here. So that is where I'm at. Alright, and I'm happy to take any questions. And, and I should say one final note that I am hoping to, once things have wrapped up, perhaps sometime in the summer or early fall, to hold an event, at least one event, maybe more than one, where I'm actually presenting these findings, really getting into, to the nitty-gritty here, right? And for folks who are interested, you know, I'd want it to be open to the public. I don't want the participants to come. I'd want youth to come. Councillors like yourselves, right? Local politicians, just curious community members too. So that my vision for that would be either in the afternoon or an evening, whatever works best for folks, and just have a couple hours where we come in and, and I get to share all the really fascinating things that I found doing this research. So keep your eyes and ears open for that. And thank you for having me. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Nobody have any questions? Good start. I'd be happy to come and hear your glory depth, for sure. And thank you for coming tonight. And if you want to stay for council, you're welcome for the remainder of the Cal meeting, or you can leave or stay online, whatever you'd like, Haley. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And folks, if, you know, you take a look at my presentation later, my email is there. Please do not hesitate to reach out at, at any point. And I do come home and try to visit often. So if anybody ever wants to chat more about this research project, I'd be happy to grab a cup of coffee and, and talk about it. So my, my email's always open. And thanks again for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight.
And moving on to 5.2, fires department report. The fire chief, Bruce, had to send his regrets tonight, so Mayor Henley is going to give us the report.
Okay, the fire department responded to nine emergency calls in April. That is 50 calls since January the 1st. Two motor vehicle collisions, two medical calls, one call for smoke sighting, two structure fires, two vehicle fires. One call was in town, two calls were in the coverage area, and six calls were assisting other departments, mutual aid. Note, four calls were on Highway 104, TransCanada. Training. They had regular training last Thursday evening. They trained with drafting from ponds, pumper relay, vie hose relays, and pumping to the Spring Hill ladder truck. They had approximately 1,200 feet of four-inch high-volume hose in use, flowing water from trucks, one and two, and over to the new truck, and then to the Spring Hill ladder truck. It's a lot of work to set up and just as much to clean it once they are done. On the weekend of May 3rd and 4th, they hosted through the Nova Scotia Firefighter School, they hosted training. They had 10 of their own members, five from Spring Hill and one from Collingwood participate in two training sessions. On Saturday was andronomous On Saturday was andronomous ammonia response and on Sunday it was traffic management. Couple reminders, wildfire season is now in place. Some areas of the provinces have already had grass fires. DNNR wildfire season started March fifteenth. Permits are required if you plan to burn. Uh, they had their first woods fire last week, thanks to DNNR Pugwash Fire, Collingwood Fire for their assistance on scene and Spring Hill Fire for covering for Oxford. They have scheduled their annual horse pulls on, for June fourteenth of this, oh, next, next month. Respectfully submitted, uh, Fire Chief Russ, Russian Deputy Chief Kyle Purdy.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Uh, next we have the municipal civil activity leader report, uh, presented by councillor.
Um, so this was passed to me from Marion. So, uh, there's lots on here. Marion can't make it tonight because she is at the arena, um, doing her recreation stuff. So this is what she's been doing. Uh, if anybody follows the Facebook, uh, Town of Oxford Recreation Commission, um, you'll see that she's been very busy since she started. So in April recap, uh, she had fifty-two, uh, children and over a hundred adults attend Easter games. They had seventeen volunteers who were a mix of high school students, middle, middle aged people uh, and seniors, which was an amazing combination of energy and experience. The arena worked perfectly for the event and it was great time. Uh, when I say the word I, it's Marion, but she says, uh, I closed the spring rec programs registration and ended up with eighty-six registrations, which is awesome. Craft, craft club started two weeks ago and you can see from their sweet creations in the town hall lobby, uh, the all season tree and hanging from the windows in the garden. Uh, indoor soccer started Friday afternoon, generous generously led by a NASS from Y reach, but which, which we met tonight. The group of fourteen played nonstop for the entire allotted time of two hours. I successfully inflated soccer balls. That was a big deal, I guess, for Marion, a huge achievement for someone who doesn't play sports. Uh, basketball, floor hockey and creative play will have be, will have begun at the time of this reading. That's where she's at tonight. We're lucky to have Mike Hudson leading the basketball and she is still looking for an adult to guide the floor hockey program. She's looking after the creative play. The entire experience has proven to be to me that the community is excited and eager to engage with rec programming. Um, Crystal, me, I led the volunteer week recognition. We had tons of engagement and, uh, posts, my post highlighting various volunteers in our community. We are so blessed to have so many kind hearted volunteers, Oxford. On that note, our engagement numbers on our rec Facebook page have skyrocketed. It's wonderful to see so many actively watching and sharing content about what's happening in our town. Uh, we gave away three prizes of Tim's cards to deserving winners of our spring cleanup challenge. To top it off, the shelves upstairs are built and the boxes of supplies are on them. Recreation gear and supplies are finely organized and easily accessible. Uh, I will work to continue cleaning and improving the upstairs. Marion's did an amazing job cleaning up the, uh, the area upstairs. Uh, for May, again, we have our newsletter and received positive feedback to complement the newsletter work. I will work to make the town's lobby more about updates on Oxford programs and events. And we'll add a donation box for our food bank. So stop into town hall and you can see her updates. Uh, we look forward to our town wide yard sale on this Saturday, right? On May seventeenth, at the beginning of writing this, we had nineteen sales signed up, including the O R C grads and the Fun Tones. For the first time, we will have, we will have live music at the Main Street gazebo courtesy of Kayden and Aubrey. I'm excited to see how this is received and to make it a weekly thing this summer to increase the vibrancy of Main Street during the warmer days. Um, again, follow the Facebook site because she's posting all of the yard sales on there. Um, at the theater, the CPA, uh, had their frozen, um, junior this weekend. Um, there are some events coming up in June and I continue to field rental inquiries for the theater. I'm still working on duplicate, duplicate systems in terms of publicity and renting, as well as better ways to store and manage gear and random pieces at the theater. So Marion's working towards the theater to make it, um, an awesome space. Um, I put out a summer survey asking residents what they want to happen this summer. She received twenty-one responses. The answers range from programming for children to guided hikes to softball for adults. I'm working on mapping out the summer plans right now. If you have any ideas or requests for that you'd like to see, please let her know. Uh, Linda and Marion are working with our community gardens group on some wonderful community beautifying projects. Keep your eyes peeled for more floral beauty to hit Oxford soon. And this is exciting news, uh, and it's even highlighted. I've saved some exciting news for last. I wish Marion was here because she does this so much better than I do. Um, I, after discussions back and forth with the Lions, Oxford Lions Club, they have offered to pay for a license for the Oxford Theater to show movies again. It says cue standing ovation from the audience. Movies at the theater are something that people have been asking for since I started this position and now we're going to be able to make it a reality. As per the license, we can start, we can't start until June. Man, oh man, it's going to be great to have movies running in that beautiful space again. Thanks Lions Club, you're amazing. Wrap up, as always, I'm incredibly grateful to have this position. Again, this is Marion talking, which allows me to connect with so many wonderful Oxford residents. Contact me anytime with ideas and suggestions on how we can engage more residents and encourage them to connect with each other even more. Marion Abbott and Pals. Thank you, Marion.
Thank you, councillor. Not, uh, moving on to the administration reports.
Thank you. Uh, it's hard to follow that, that was much more exciting. Um, so to note, I'm doing a reach out to the public. Um, we are in need of a member of the public to sit on our audit committee. Someone with accounting background does not have to reside in Oxford. Um, I'll also be posting this, uh, an ad on our websites as well about this. Uh, so for April, um, a lot of work's been done, especially with the budget and everything. But some of the other items highlighted, uh, working with, um, bill inquiries and bill analysis for proper dating for year end. Um, also a lot of budget preparation, quarter four of water bills have been, uh, sent out, uh, as well as the interim, um, bills have been, uh, sent out as well. And, uh, we use canoe procurement, so that has been updated on our website. Um, minimum wage in Nova Scotia's went up, so we had to make changes there. Um, the recreation page on our website, uh, has been updated to assist impound, including, um, the Oxford Community Recreation Calendar, uh, the April twenty twenty-five Oxford Recreation Newsletter, Spring twenty twenty-five Recreation Programs and update Spring twenty twenty-five Recreation Program information after registrations closed. And also, um, some assistance, uh, needed by our IT person over here to my left, uh, regarding, uh, Brightspace, uh, website because of the code of conduct, um, training was a bit, uh, tricky to get loaded onto the tablets and everything. So fair bit of work there and that, so that's what I have to report.
Thank you, Miranda. Moving on to council committees and board reports. Uh, number one, All Saints Community Healthcare Foundation Committee, Stan Google.
Okay, um, lots of stuff went on at this particular meeting because it was the regular board meeting, the EGM meeting and a special meeting, uh, that was held after that. So all the improvements are there that I could conclude. Um, the big, the big thing is they, they wanted to, uh, emphasize that All Saints Spring Hill Hospital is, is here to stay. Um, they've had a, a large investment, um, in their laundry facility services, which I guess are dated back to when the hospital was built. Um, so they, they've replaced all of their laundry facilities. They're now doing laundry services for Cumberland region and some rural, uh, sites as well. So they've, they've had a, a big, uh, introductory of that facility with Tori Russian being there on, I mean, fifth, I guess it was. And, um, it employs around five people. And previously they had actually been trucking their laundry to and from, uh, Dartmouth area. So the savings are, are real and substantial there. Um, the foundation has, uh, done quite a bit of work this past year with the, uh, providing gym upgrade for the Spring Hill High School, um, second floor patient, uh, TV upgrades, uh, at the hospital. Gas cards, uh, for cancer patient support and the anniversary program. That's a five thousand dollar anniversary. Um, little bit of work with the board, uh, shuffling some, some members. And, uh, they did get, uh, their ice and water machine and new step, uh, steppers for the rehabilitation services. Um, and they're, they wanted me to, uh, indirectly wanted me to say that if there's anybody registered in nursing programs, um, that is in need of a job or needs a job, please get in touch with the All Saints Hospital because that's one of their, their big, um, struggles is to find the nursing staff. And, um, they're also hoping to see, uh, dialysis, uh, unit coming to All Saints. That's why I was very, very soon. So yeah, that's about it.
Any questions? Stables? Well, um, did they hire? Did they already have five people employed or this was a new?
From what I understand, they, they did, but they, um, but maybe full time, I, I, I can't really comment on that, but I know that they're, uh, they're now really gainfully employed and lots of stuff.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stana. We have, um, police advisory board. I'm hearing that.
Thank you. So the police advisory board committee, uh, they had met on Tuesday, April eighth. Uh, there is a copy of the approved minutes from January twenty-first in the council package. Uh, also included in the council package is an RCMP report and I'll go over that here in a minute as well. Uh, some of the issues that were brought forward from the board members, um, they were, um, looking for some, uh, more no littering signs in the area. Uh, as we got to spring, uh, things got more exposed, so, uh, it was, uh, time to clean up, uh, the areas. Also about our no, uh, parking signs to change them and some of them have been changed to say no stopping. Um, this is more enforceable. Um, if it's a more, it says no stopping rather than no parking. So, cause you can just have your foot on the brake, so, but you cannot stop. Uh, so, and this came about because of cars parking on the opposite side of the post office. And we were having issues over on Ellis Street as well, um, parking on both sides. Uh, so also speed signs were discussed and we're just, uh, looking at that through budget consideration. And also some, um, concerns and, uh, worry about like damage to the ballpark. Uh, the Trails Association reached out to see if they could help. And so this might be something we could work together on, um, to, where we now have an ATV trail, uh, road. We may be able to omit going through the ball field area. So, uh, we're looking to see if we can do something about that. So that's just a project that's on the go. Our next police advisory board meeting is tentatively scheduled for September ninth. Uh, and for the RCMP report, which again is in the council package, uh, it shows that our total criminal code and non criminal codes calls for service were ninety-five. So we had that for between the quarter of January first to March thirty-first. So ninety-five calls here for Oxford. As well, a few, uh, occurrences that they reported on, uh, we had a report on the firearms collision, parking, suspicious persons, abandoned vehicle and impaired firearms. So again, this, uh, RCMP report is attached in the, um, council package.
And Kim, and moving on to communities and women.
Thank you. So we had a meeting April twenty-eighth. Um, some of the highlights that were discussed, uh, there was a seed giveaway from Plant Grow Share Row. Also compost council of Canada and Harrods Smith. So between those three organizations, they generously offered free veggie and herb seed packages, uh, to help us kickstart planting. So this was organized by the provincial communities in Bloom. And, uh, so we applied as Oxford, applied and was successful. Uh, the package just came in, so I have a package of a huge box of seeds, uh, to share with the community here. Also organized, uh, rain barrels to be set back up, uh, and also removal of the old community garden beds that were unsafe, uh, with broken wood and old nails. Um, plan is to get new ones built. It may take a couple of years, but, uh, we plan on, uh, we're looking into some funding, um, and also to make them more accessible. So is, is what we're looking at. We are currently planning a garden tour, so more details on that to come up. Uh, we also, uh, kindly received some hanging heart shaped flower baskets, uh, that we plan to hang along the privacy wall at the trailhead. Alan Maxine Clark have kindly donated the wire baskets, the flowers and their time, uh, to water them. So we're going to make sure there's a rain barrel up there for them for the watering. Uh, communities in blooms organized two workshops. Uh, so one workshop is on companion and succession planting by Megan Baker on June fifth at six thirty at the fire hall. There'll be, um, advertising here very like thinking this week on this. Um, and the thing is, it would be what you will learn is which plants to grow together to get the most out of your garden plot and how to plan and time your planting so that you can harvest for longer. This event is free as we received a grant from the community health board to assist with this. Also another event, um, that is being organized as a workshop by Susanna, and I'll probably say this wrong, Bella from Versa Firmstead. Uh, that's the name of our firm, uh, about food forests and doing some hands-on work to add to the fruit trees and bushes we had planted last year. Um, the date is tentatively set for May twenty-fourth, which is coming right up very quickly. Um, from ten till noon, that's a Saturday at the Black River Park. So again, this will be advertising that, uh, will get posted here very shortly. Uh, that date may change though, so it's, I guess there's still some confirmation go there. Um, so what they will learn is how to choose perennials, uh, to accompany your fruit trays, biodynamic and permaculture principles in planting a food forest. I'm not going to pretend I do not have a green thumb, so it's not my language. Uh, but yes, so that was communities in bloom, lots of great work and excited to see some color pop coming down through town. The, well, one with Megan is already on the Facebook site. What's that? The one with Megan is on the Facebook right now. So she's probably waiting on the confirmation of the date for the other one to start posting it, but I seen. Megan's on there. Right, right.
All right, any other questions? Well, um, moving on to number seven, discussion and correspondence, we have none. So they're being neutered to business, uh, to clear this meeting adjourned. And we'll pass the chair, I'll pass the chair over to Mayor Henley to start our special counseling.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Black. Okay. Do we have to do any, you want to start a separate meeting or we'll follow right through? Okay, like to call this meeting to order of Oxford Town Council to special meeting, the date is in May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, moved by councillor Jones, second by councillor Nick. Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, first up, a water and sewer services to forty-eight, one, two, Main Street. I'll turn the floor to Linda, go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, a full council package is on all the councils, uh, desks. So this, uh, we had two requests, so this is the first one. Uh, so, uh, as the letter reads, uh, to whom it may concern, I'm asking for a water and sewer connection to four eight one two Main Street. I need this connection to be able to move forward with the development of the four unit townhouse project approved by council. I would like this approval as soon as possible so I can move forward with ground work. So this is that development that we had just approved here just recently and Nick has been over there. Um, and, uh, so he is working with, uh, Nick on this as well. So we're just looking forward, uh, with water and sewer services, a grant from the council.
We need a motion for that.
We do, a motion to approve.
I'll move that we go ahead with the water and sewer services to four eight one two Main Street.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, moved by councillor Nutt, second by councillor Moore. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise a hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you very much. Next up sewer service to eighty Horton Street.
Okay, thank you. So this one here already has water going by her place, so we don't need the water permission. But she's asking for min- permission to, uh, have a sewer hookup to eighty Horton Street in Oxford. She's placing a mini home, uh, there, there was a home there before, but it did not have sewer there before. So this is a new sewer completely. Um, the pad is already going into place, uh, so we're just looking for formality from council to approve the sewer. And again, she's working with Nick as well to get this together.
Could have that in a motion, please, from someone.
I'll make that movement to, uh, provide sewer hookup to eighty Horton Street in Oxford.
Second or?
I'm second.
Okay, moved by councillor Jones and second by councillor Black, or deputy mayor Black. Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Is that what, Linda, do you know? Uh, which lot is it?
Yeah, the Hick, Hicks, I think it used to be the Hicks. They passed away.
They passed away.
The Hickey residence, I think.
Oh, thank you. Uh which one?
The Hickey residence.
Evelyn, yeah, Hickey.
Or the Hickey right there by the old Turk's door. That's a long way. That's Horton Street, back.
Yeah.
Okay.
From Ross.
Yeah.
I'm on the road.
Any other questions or comments?
Obviously, they had a septic before.
Yeah.
That that's what it was.
Yeah. So there are no problems with the hookup there, is there, Nick?
No, actually, there was a lateral already placed there, so they just need to tie into that.
Okay, good. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is made by Councillor Jones. Please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded. Hearing none, motion carried. Next off, we're going in camera, folks, as we tend to do sometimes. I need a motion going camera, please.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
We shall be back, folks. Camera, in camera, the time is six fifty-one.